Jerome.
Wrong.
Okay, welcome to the Central Texas College District Order Trustees Regular Meeting for April the 25th, 2023. If you'll all rise, please. Invitation that they will be led by trustee Towers, the pledge allegiance by trustee Colleen. And I'll read the Texas pledge.
Please join me in whatever form of faith you express. Father, I thank you. And the list could go on and on, of life, of friends, people, of this institution, so many things to be grateful for. Thank you for blessing us, that we might be a blessing to others. Thank you for these who serve in this place. Thank you for the commitment with a lasting effect upon the lives of students. Thank you for our state, for our nation, and thank you for the day that you've given us. Help us rejoice and be glad in it. Give us a spirit of cooperation, a spirit of trust, a spirit of mercy and grace. I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
United States of America and the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. We do have a quorum present today, and this meeting is being recorded. And members of the public that would like access to the meeting online can go to the Central Texas College website. Item two on our agenda is considered approval of the minutes of regular meeting for the Board of Trustees after March 28, 2023. A copy of that's been given to you in your read-ahead package. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Sorry.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on a motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Chairman's update. Opportunity for members of the public to suggest addition of topics for discussion or address topics of interest, with a presentation limited to three minutes. Is there anyone present who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, on the agenda itself, we have items number 10, 11, 13. I'd like to consolidate those into one motion when we get to that point. Dr. Adie and Dr. Garrett has agreed to this. We've got a lot packed in today, so we need to move ahead as fast as we can. Chafford's report.
Yes, sir. We have an award here. Aaron Montemeyer and Don Linsworth from United Way Campaign to give the, present us with a cornerstone award. So, sir, if you want to, you want to go down and receive that? Aaron, he'll be right then.
Sure. In behalf of United Way and United Way Board, thanks for the college's support.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
For the exercise, and this is a good thing for our community, and we're always trying to support the community the best we can.
We appreciate it very much. And I'll be brief because I know times of essence, but the cornerstone award, I think, predates my arrival at this United Way. I think, I don't remember, it's been 20-plus years, but basically CTC embodies that. They've been a perennial platinum giver, steadfast, always supporting us. And our newest leadership chair and vice chair come from CTC, and they're in the room. That's what I recognize, my new bosses, Dr. Michelle Carter and then Valerie Payson. Appreciate the leadership. Thanks again.
Thank you, Aaron.
Go back to work.
Okay, Dr. Garrett has an introduction.
Good afternoon. I am so excited to introduce our new executive director of marketing outreach and recruitment, Karen Rudolph. She's been with us two days now. Today's her second day, and she brings an extensive amount of experience, both at the community college and the university level, and most recently at the ISD level. So, we're very happy to have her as this, our new executive director. You want to say it?
Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to jumping right in and getting involved. I grew up here in Colleen, and so it's exciting to be here and get plugged in and start telling all the great stories. Thank you.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Good to have you back home.
Okay, we have a graduation ceremony for the Central Texas College Ford Technicians of Tomorrow program, the eighth cohort, which will be on April 26, which is actually tomorrow at 10 o'clock. I think all the board members got an invitation, so be sure to be there and support that program. Pictures of the month. Okay, the first picture. Tell you a little bit about, August Fluger, our congressman for the 11th district, was here yesterday and spent a couple of hours on campus with our deputies and our senior leadership, and we walked him around to various places on campus. He got to meet the technicians of Tomorrow and say some words to them, and he is a, he's our, he's up for reelection next year. His area that covers all the way from the Midland, Midland-Odesa Basin, all the way to San Angelo, almost to Fort Worth. So, it's a big area of Texas. Flugerville is named after his heritage, he's third-generation Texan, so he's an Air Force pilot. He got, he didn't retire, but he left that as a lieutenant colonel. He's now a colonel in the Air Force Reserve, so distinguished fighter pilot. And anyway, good, good visit. Next. CTC Wellness Fair. Who wants to talk about the CTC Wellness Fair? Larry.
Good afternoon. So, on April 5, Risk Management held the CTC Wellness Fair, and this was the first Wellness Fair since 2019. This year's event was sponsored by Seton Medical Center, Harker Heights. In total, we raised $2,459, which exceeded our 2019 total. And this, these funds go toward the Risk Management Scholarship Fund, which sponsors students pursuing degrees in healthcare, fitness, homeland security, and emergency management. In total, we had about 300 participants that showed up for the event. We had 61 vendors and donors that supported us. And if you look at the photo going from left to right, the first one, we have Legacy Martial Arts of Parker Heights doing a demonstration of some of the programs that they offer. The second one was Baylor Scott &amp; White conducting blood pressure screenings. The third one was Elevate Fitness, owned by a professor, one of CTC's professors, Elizabeth Bobey, and they performed demonstrations on some of their movement fitness programs. And then if we go back to the bottom left, we have Title Boxing of Colleen doing a demonstration. And then this middle photo is Dr. Dallas Johnston of Isdale Chiropractic. He's checking the spinal alignment of a participant that showed up at his table. And then the final picture is of Shania Johnson, who was one of our student volunteers that assisted us. Our donors included Shady Villa Hotel in Salado, Viva Les Arts, Ace Hardware, Harker Heights, A+ Federal Credit Union, the CTC Wellness Department, CTC Aviation Department, Agriculture Department, and Planetarium, just to name a few. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any questions? Good job. That was probably one of the best wellness fairs we've had that I've been exposed to. If you didn't go, you missed something. That's all I can tell you. It was, it was well done. Mr. Fisher.
Indeed.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman Weaver, distinguished board members, Chancellor Yanopoulos, and my fellow attendees. On Monday, the 3rd of April, the Bible Student Fellowship, a non-denominational Christian student club, under the faculty sponsorship of economics professor Barbara Little, hosted performers from the Father's House Church in San Saba. Conducted in the courtyard, the Easter-themed performance was followed by an Easter egg hunt. Both activities were free and open to CTC students. On Wednesday, the 12th of April, the Central Texas College Chapter of the Psi Beta Community College National Honor Society in Psychology, under the joint faculty sponsorship of Dr. Joyce Jones, Dr. Sherri Worth, and Dr. Cara Ariaga, hosted a symposium for 200 student attendees. Pictured top center is Dr. Susan Buckley, an assistant superintendent with the Colleen Independent School District. She spoke on education and the military community, from her reference in her experience as a student, as a teacher, as a principal, and now as an administrator. Not pictured is CTC's own Dr. Tammy Samaripa, our Health Sciences Department Chair, who also presented her findings from her recent doctoral dissertation defense centered around college-level instruction and military student performance. The Fine Arts Department has been busy. On Thursday, the 13th of April, the spring semester student art show opened with their reception honoring exhibition winners. As you can see on the screen, the show has something for everyone, to include acrylic and oil paintings, charcoal and colored pencil drawings, ceramics, digital photography, plus jewelry and metalworks. Pictured top center are the award recipients, from left to right, holding their certificates. Adriana Morters, whose digital negative work titled "Dorian Gray" earned honorable mention. Esteban Lopez Flores, who earned second place for his charcoal drawing titled "Steadfast." Kiki Kelly, who earned first place for her acrylic piece titled "Adam and Eve." Next is Lanay Gilbert, whose ceramic piece titled "Ambitious Coils" earned honorable mention. Next stands Faith Hedge, who earned third place for her watercolor and colored pencil piece titled "Sauce Casement." And lastly, Rosa Carr of Culinary Arts fame, whose digital photo titled "Sweet Treats," appropriately, also earned honorable mention. And as a reminder, the community is invited to view the free exhibit in the Fine Arts Teaching Spaces, Building 218, from now until the 5th of May. And just last week, the Drama Students presented its spring production of French playwright Molière's comedy, "The Learned Ladies," set in 18th-century France. Pictured throughout the photos, in the slide are the five lead characters played by CTC student Ace Gonzalez, Julissa Sedano, who graduates this spring, sociology major DJ Gelata, general studies major Eliza Casper, and pictured prominently, top right is ECHS sophomore Farouk Bailey. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher. Lots of activity going on. Valerie. Had a lot of things going on this morning, sir.
Do have a lot. Hello, everybody. I'm Julie Starkey, and the Community College Survey of Student Engagement, just a little bit of background, is a survey that we are administering here at the college as part of our Accelerating Student Success Implementation Grant. It is a national survey that's going to give us amazing information about our student experience. So, it's going to give us information about, you know, what the students' perceptions are of their classroom experience. If we have students that have, are homeless, or are food insecurities, do they feel welcomed on our campus? This is a survey that's done nationally, and so we will be able to compare national results, state results, regional results, and we will get this in August and have amazing information to share. Right now, our faculty are actually doing a part of this survey for us. We're getting their perceptions about the student experience as well. So, we're going to have from the student side, as well as from the faculty side, and be able to use this data to make changes to programs and services and things like this. This event, our cash cube event, was our way to say thank you for the students. This survey is a very long survey for the students to participate, to complete. It takes about 30 minutes for them to do this survey, and it's not an easy one to do. So, what we did is we gave them an opportunity to come to, it was a cash cube, you know, one of those air tunnel things that you set up, and we had fake $100 bills rolling around, blowing around, and they go in there and they grab as many $100 bills as they could in 20 seconds, and then they take that, their stash of money, you know, their hundreds and thousands of dollars, and go buy a little prize. And it was our way of saying thank you. They had fun, and they ended up more competing against each other as to who could grab more money than anybody else, as opposed to going after the prize. The top row of pictures is actually pictures of students grabbing their money. The middle one is actually Merrick Sully, Bargas, one of our staff members testing it out. Then the bottom picture actually shows the students taking the survey, because to get into the cube, obviously, you had to take the survey. And so, it was just our way of saying thank you. So, questions?
Just a comment. Well, this survey, I noticed on the workshop, I was not present, but I was listening in. I noticed that the chairman was very adamant about making sure there are, that barriers from students being served and taken care of are removed. Would this give you information?
This is going, absolutely. That's what this is all about, is the student experience, if a student is experiencing a barrier, a challenge, things that are going well, absolutely, that's what this is going to do. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Julie. Thanks. There we go.
Good afternoon. I'm Eva Hutchins, Associate Dean of Enrollment Services. Student Services and Academic Advising hosted the Spring Transfer Fair on April 13. We had a total of 20 colleges come and participate, and you'll see in the photos, the students of CTC, they're talking to representatives about their next path. And in total, we had about 117 students come through the fair and visit with those representatives. We also had numerous faculty, staff, and administration that came through to get information pamphlets so that they could share that with the students that they encounter, of which one of our distinguished guests was the chancellor. So, we appreciate the support for our transfer fair, and it was another success. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Eva.
I'm so excited to come tell you about the golf tournament. I just had to race down here. So, last Friday, we held the annual, 29th Annual Golf Tournament at the Colleen Stone Tree Golf Course, and we had 25 teams that had registered to play that day. We were a, it was a successful event, raising almost $25,000 towards scholarships for our spring new portal that we're going to open up. In the top first photo on the left, it's Dr. Fisher, Mr. Jimmy Towers, Dr. Tina Adie, and Dr. Dan Adie preparing to head out on the course at the beginning of the tournament. The second photo in the top middle is Mr. Mike Ernst, Chancellor Yanopoulos, Mr. Robert Keating, and Mark Kujan, and they as well are ready to go play golf that day. Photo number three in the top right is our 2023 champions. They were our first-place team, which consisted of Philip Crosby, Dr. Kenneth Bass, prospective nursing student Sam Carroll, and Chris Doyle. Chris Doyle was also our winner of our longest drive. So, and Dr. Carter is also featured in that photo. She must have had the good vibes for that team, because they were the championship team, and she took the photo prior to them winning the tournament. So, she did a fantastic job with that, picking the winners. The bottom-left image is our players preparing to take off, and they're getting all their rules and instructions from the pro at the golf course. And the bottom-middle photo is Mr. Tim Schimmel's team, and the last one on the right is Hendrick's Financial Team. So, we had a great time, all the golfers. I hope they had a great experience. We had a fun time putting it together and just conducting it for everyone. So, any questions?
Thanks, Val.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes my report, sir, and I encourage everybody to come to these events. These don't happen just by accident, none of these things, so please come.
Thank you, Chancellor. Item number five on our agenda is discussing certain approval of the March 2023 Year of Financial Statement investment report. Mr. Liberty.
Yes, sir. You should all have a copy of this report. The chair and I had a brief conversation about it earlier, and as you look at the numbers, three numbers up from the bottom on the first page, you can see that we are down for the fiscal year slightly more than we were compared to this time last year. However, if you will remember, we did approve a deficit budget. We knew this was going to happen going in. You always have to look at some good news. The chair pointed out to me, you know, hey, Bob, your investment numbers look great, which we are much better than we were last year, thanks to what's happening with the bond market, and also the fact that even though we are down, we are not down as much as we had projected. So, I guess that's positive, if you have to look at that. We continue to have very tight fiscal constraints to ensure that we don't have the deficit go any farther than necessary, if at all possible, and we're doing everything we can to figure out how to increase enrollments. We actually, I guess it was yesterday, we were on the phone for an hour and a half yesterday afternoon, trying to figure out what we could do at Fort Hood and Continental Campus with the dean, the chancellor, myself, Dr. Carter, Ms. Jordan, we were all on the phone, trying to come up with some ideas, and we actually have a new assignment for you. I shared that with you this morning. We're going to, we're going to have you come up with some great ideas to help us figure out how we can get those soldiers back to taking classes. It's, it's got, as you know, it's gotten difficult with military voluntary education, and we've got to figure that hook to get them back, so that's one of the things we've got to work on. I can answer any questions. I'm more than happy to.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Year of Financial Statement, March 2023. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six is discussing certain approval of the exercise of third option period for Great Western Dining Contract with an end date of 31 August 2024. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm here to seek approval to exercise the third option year of the Great Western Dining Contract with an end date of August 31, 2024. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Show move.
Motion made and seconded to approve the extension of the Great Western Dining Facility Contract to August 2024. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And while you're there, Mr. Gonzalez, please talk us about the housing rates.
Yes, sir.
Increase for fiscal year 2324.
Yes, sir. I'm here to seek board approval to increase the housing rates for fiscal year 2324. For the fall and spring semesters, the rate for a single occupancy would increase to $3,405. For a double occupancy, it would increase to $2,985. For the summer semester, a single occupancy would increase to $2,115, and for a double occupancy, that would increase to $1,915. And I'll just remind everyone that the increase, the total increase for those two areas are $245 for the fall and spring, and the summer increase is approximately, or is a total of $190 for the summer. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? And I'll entertain a motion. Motion made and seconded to approve the base of occupancy rates for the fiscal year 2324. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Got one more.
Next item, while you're still there, is discussing certain approval to exercise the third option year period for the Casa Blanca Travel Services Contract, with the period of September 1, 2023, through August 31, 2024.
Yes, sir. That is correct. I am seeking board approval to exercise the third option year of the Casa Blanca Travel Services Contract. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions?
Show move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Casa Blanca Travel Service Extension Contract. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Item number nine is considered approval of the Bon and Butler Construction Incorporated for the Enrollment Center Elevation Project with a guaranteed minimum price of $817,578.
Yes, thank you. So, as you just heard, Bron and Butler Construction, their construction manager at Risk, they did submit a guaranteed maximum price for the Enrollment Center Elevator Edition of $817,578. This does include $65,000 in allowances for unknown conditions. This was actually a part of a bigger project. I won't go over that. That information was in the packet that you had received. We certainly felt like it made good sense to go ahead and pull this particular item out of that project and move ahead, move ahead with it. The budget estimates were in line, and then we felt like any delays would certainly result in higher costs due to inflation and future price increases. This particular project had already been actually bid several years ago when we had gotten a price. It had exceeded the budget at that time, and so we certainly felt like it was a good time to move it forward. The estimate for the project is about 24 weeks. The, just to go ahead and get the elevator once approved, the work should be completed within 12 weeks. The anticipated start date is October of '23, with a completion date around the end of the calendar year, maybe within the first couple of weeks of January. So, with that, we, the administration recommends approval of the Bron and Butler Construction for the Enrollment Center Elevator Edition Project.
Any questions, Mr. Armstrong? Motion made to approve, Mr. Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the contract. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item number 10, 11, and 12, and stoppage policy number 560, order to elevate retirees to emeritus status. Ms. Lovey Dunn, and Dr. George Griswell, and Ms. Annabelle Smith, Dr. Adie, and Dr. Garrett.
Yes, sir. I bring to you three requests for emeritus status. One is for Lovey Dunn, as Department Chair of Office Technology. She retired in August 2021 and had over 40 years at Central Texas College. The second one is for Dr. Bob Criswell, for Dean of Student Services. He retired in 2001 with over 25 years of service and returned in 2016 as a full-time faculty member, then separated again in 2022. And also, Dean Criswell was the first dean I worked for when I joined CTC in 1993.
And from Ms. Annabelle Smith, who was with CTC for over 42 years and served in the Veteran Services and Financial Aid Department, and she retired as the associate dean of that department.
Move we approve all of these?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the item 10, 11, and 12 recommendations. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well-deserved.
Well-deserved honors for all three of these employees. They've done great work here. Item number 13 is discussing certain approval of mission, vision, values, and strategic plan for annual year 2024 to 2028. And Dr. Garrett, by the way, copy this is in your read-ahead package.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon again. The administration seeks board approval for the proposal of the 2024 through 2028 academic year, mission and values, and then the revised vision and strategic plan per the direction given at the board workshop last week. The updated version provided is in your packet.
We'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the mission, vision, and values strategic plan. Any discussion on that motion?
I'd like to make a comment, Chairman. I want to apologize to you personally, because I had to leave the room before you finished your presentation. That was unintended but rude of me, and thank you for the work in your committee that did the work to put the presentation together.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Garrett. Great work.
Thank you very much.
Item number 15 is discussing certain appointment of a chancellor. Item number 15 is discussing center appointment of a Chancellor. The board.
You skipped one.
Say again.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, I missed one.
You missed one.
No, I didn't. Board resolution. Oh, the resolution, okay. Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, discuss center approval of the board resolution number 441, the resolution in support for the Texas Commission on Community College Finance Recommendations. That recommendation has been discussed in the workshop and also provided as a read-ahead in your package. I recommend that we adopt it as a motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
That recommendation will be forwarded. And then we have item number 15, discussing center appointment of a Chancellor. We have discussed this in an executive session. We need to bring that forward with a recommendation for a vote. And in order to do that, we need to go into executive session to discuss the particulars of the contract, so we have affirmative on that. And we will do so, but before we go into executive session, I'd like to go through item number 16, which is recommendation for any topics coming to items or announcements by the board members. Start with Ms. Colleen.
None.
This may be my last meeting, as it's a good chance, and so I want to tell all of you how much I appreciate you and thank you for making this a great college for a great place. Thank you.
For those who don't know, early voting started yesterday, and it's going to go to Tuesday next week, I believe, some places. I don't know, does Colleen have weekend voting? Or is it just Monday through Fridays?
No, just Monday.
Okay. Copper's Cove is Monday through Friday, then Monday, Tuesday, and then Election Day is May 6. I went and voted last night, or yesterday afternoon, but I encourage whoever. You don't know who I voted for.
Oh.
But I encourage you, like in Copper's Cove, we had a very low turnout yesterday. Two hands. That's how many people voted in Copper's Cove. And just for the people that can be watching on the YouTube channel, there's time to get out there and go out and vote and do your civic duties, okay?
Thank you, Jim, for that. Item number 17 is the announcement and time and location of a special meeting for Tuesday the 16th, May 2023, to result, to canvass the results of election, and that will be held at 1:00 PM. And the board workshop scheduled for Tuesday, May 16, 2023, at 1:15 PM, and the annual board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 23, 2023, at 1:00 PM. At this point, we will go into executive session.
Meeting back to order. The board has completed an executive session. On item 15 of our agenda, discussing the appointment of chancellor. At this point, I understand we have a motion.
Don't move.
Second, the motion is to appoint Dr. Michelle Carter as the next chancellor of Central Texas College. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion through. Being no other business for Central Texas College at this point, we stand adjourned.